I'm going to call the meeting to order. Our first order of business, Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, with all due ownership, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you tonight. Does anyone wish to talk or make a comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Saying no, Mr.?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Even though it's kind of public, I just want to make mention, although it'll be mentioned later tonight, the first community forum with regards to the high school project is coming up Wednesday, September 14th at 7:00 PM at the Middleborough High School. This is for everybody, businesses, parents. More information will be coming out, it should be coming out in your electric bill, should be coming out in a newspaper article that'll be produced, I'm sure. So there'll be more information, but I wanted to get it out there right at the beginning. This is for everyone. It's the first, as it says, first community forum, Wednesday, September 14th, 7:00 PM, at the Middleborough High School. Everyone, all citizens are invited to attend and encouraged to attend. So please mark your calendars, and there'll be others, but that is, I think, if you can get there, get there in the first one and start getting information and giving information, because they're looking for input as well. The architects are in the process of being negotiated, but that'll come, we'll discuss that later, but I wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to go on to our discussion items. Just so everyone knows in the action items, we're not going to do the school improvement revision tonight. We'll save that for the August meeting. And so I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening I bring before you a final candidate for the position of Pupil Personnel Services Director here in the Middleborough Public Schools. As you know, and as the folks at home may not know, on July 11th I received a resignation and accepted the resignation of Dr. Heather Larkin, who was our PPS director, and her resignation is effective July 31st. That being said, there is certainly the imminent need for a new director of Pupil Personnel Services. And as we discussed at the last meeting, a plan to move forward, if we had somebody from within who was interested in the position, and we do, that we should seriously consider her application. And I recommend to you tonight, a candidate, who is, her name is Carolyn Lyons. She has worked for the school system for four years as the secondary special education team facilitator. Prior to that, and beginning way back when, she's a graduate of Smith College, and she went, graduated cum laude in three and a half years. She moved on to Suffolk Law School, where she was awarded her Juris Doctorate in May of 2007. After that, she spent some time doing a couple of other things, but then began to clerk with the law offices of Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lehane, LLP, in Boston as a clerk, and soon was hired by that same firm and worked there from September 2007 to July 2012. I would tell you that she's a highly respected special education attorney. On a personal and professional level, I worked with the firm of Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lehane in the Bridgewater-Rainham district for 21 years. And the lawyers that I have dealt with have recommended Carolyn very highly. I think we're fortunate to have someone of such caliber as a candidate for our position, and I bring her forward this evening to sit before you and respond to any questions that you might have regarding her candidacy for the position.
And just so the community understands, the director of Pupil Personnel Services is one of the few positions, that being also the superintendent of schools, the business manager, and assistant superintendent, that falls under the purview of the school committee. So in technicality, the hiring of said position, while recommended by the superintendent, is actually done by the school committee. So Carol, please have a seat.
Welcome today. Thank you.
Before we start, do you want to tell us a little about yourself? And also what interests you in the position?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mr. Lynch. I mean, that's a pretty good introduction in terms of me. In terms of education, I was raised by an educator. My mother was a teacher, and became a single mother, and became a homemaker at that point. So I've been involved with education pretty solidly since I went to law school. I actually started clerking with the firm of Coaten Crabtree &amp; Strong, which was a parent-side attorney for special ed matters. And shortly thereafter, I started doing that actually before law school. When I got into law school, that was when I linked up with Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lehane. So my entire legal training was all in the area of education. And even then, as a kind of brand-new lawyer, I was coming to team meetings. I've been involved with the educational process the entire time. It was nagging at me that I wasn't part of it. So about six years after I began practice, that's when, in very much, you know, it was a mutual agreement, but I chose Middleborough as much as Middleborough chose me. When I knew I was going to come out of the practice, I'd worked with many, many districts. But there was something about Middleborough that struck me as extremely resource-rich, and I continue to feel that way today. So at the time, the Pupil Personnel Services Director reached out to me, and I applied for the position. And at the time, it was for grades six through 12 and all the out-of-district caseload. So that's what I did in my first year. And I've done various grade levels from that point forward, but always staying in, you know, secondary. Now, two years ago, this position opened up, and I purposefully didn't apply. And I didn't apply because I wanted to learn more about education. I wanted to learn this process. And to be honest with you, I was blown away by the caliber of people I worked with, not just administratively, but in, you know, teachers, ESPs, related service providers. So I abstained at that time. And it's now that I believe that is my time, and now that I believe that I'm ready. In part, because I've developed relationships over the four years that I've worked here that I'm very proud of. And that goes not just for who I work with every day, but my parents and my students. So I take this job very, very seriously. I take this responsibility very seriously. And, you know, I want to move forward collaboratively with the district and with our community.
Thank you very much. I'll open the floor up to members of the committee if they have particular questions they'd like to ask. Mr. Gillis.
Welcome, Carolyn. Question I have, one of several, is, I'm not going to pretend to know exactly what goes on in SPED 24/7, because I don't, even though I've been in education many years. My interest is in finding out in your view where we, as a district, can save money with respect to placements. We all know that SPED has a very high price tag attached to it. And we all know that at any given moment, somebody could move in here and, huge ticket item. Where can we save money on some of these placements?
That's a great question. So when you're looking at out-of-district placements and the funding, and, you know, you're right, it actually increases every single year, it seems. The only way to get a handle and get ahead on that spending is to have an idea of exactly what our need is. And unfortunately, that need does change. Sometimes that changes year to year, just as you said. When someone moves in, if someone moves in with a particular type of placement, it can blow your budget with one child. So job one is having a handle, and that goes for pre-K all the way through post-grad, of what our need is, okay? Trying to gauge, once a student does go out of district, how we can potentially earn that student back. And that's a process. So one of the ways you do that is by, I mean, in the world of SPED funding, you can either front-load and pay upfront to build a program, or you can pay on the back end when students go out of district. It's always better to pay upfront, in my opinion, because you have the power to retain several students rather than paying for the tuition of just one student. One of the things that I'm interested in is a needs assessment district-wide in using the resources we have. I am of the opinion that we have quite a few valuable resources here in the district. And I think that there is an argument to be made for reshuffling some of what we have or taking a good look at what we have and how we're using it. Is there a better way to use it? I'm pretty analytical, so that's one of my strengths. I like to problem-solve. This is one of the things I would do. It does not happen in a vacuum. You have to do it with everybody. You have to talk to your families. You have to talk to your students. You have to talk to administration, your teachers, your facilitators. These are the people who are going to have that information. You rely on the information. I see my role as culling that information, looking at it, analyzing it, and then collaboratively trying to figure it out. So that's how I would address that. Sure.
This evening, one of the items that has been brought to really, really forefront for us is when we talk about MCAS scores or standardized test scores. And one of the items that has really been brought to us is that we're looking at a 10th grade student, but we really shouldn't be, we should be looking at these younger students. What else can we do? I mean, we've started looking at it, and it's really broad brush at this point. I think, you know, how can we delve deeper into this?
So in short, in terms of improving MCAS scores all around?
Well, I think if you increase the MCAS scores, you're going to increase the education level, and it's going to better the child, no matter what, any child.
Absolutely. I mean, I think that we have a heavy focus on literacy here in the district, and I think that's wise. Because, and that's what our focus has been over the last couple of years, because students need to know how to read before they can, you know, extrapolate more higher-order concepts out of their reading. And I can tell you, receiving children just in the last four years at grade six on, we have seen over time that those scores are not as high as we want them to be, and there is still a major struggle in terms of reading. So one of the ways you address that is to attack reading at the elementary level. And I think both elementary schools really are tackling that. It also helps to take a good look at what we're doing at the secondary level in terms of reading, because if there are gaps, and anytime you have that, you know, these students are working through the system. So even if you tackle elementary, you still have to deal with the students who are at secondary and get them to a passage rate and overall improve their education. So one of the ways you do that is by taking a look at how we're attacking reading, having opportunities for special ed services. One of the things the high school has unrolled this year is the Project Success Program, which increases the overall time that students are receiving special ed services in addition to having that service be consistent and year-long. So I was part of that panel. I was part of that process. By no means was it my idea, but I think it's absolutely brilliant. And I think that we're going to see that increase just by virtue of the fact, well, for one, we have incredibly talented staff that are going to be leading that program, but you're increasing time on learning for them. So I think time on learning is another big piece. That's the way I would tackle it. It's certainly not something that happens in a vacuum. And I think for me, when I look at special education, one of the mistakes, and it's tempting to make it, is to say, this is a special ed issue, so special ed needs to handle it. And I just don't think that. I think special ed is truly an entire-village concept. It involves everybody from your general educators to your parents, to your students. At the high school, I've been hyper-focused on where do our students fall in this process? You know, I mean, I've had the luxury of sitting around at a table and talking about kids, and I can't stand it. I like having the kids at the table. Obviously, at the elementary levels, you're not going to do that. But one of the reasons I like having kids at the table is because they're really good at telling us what we're doing wrong. And that's what we're supposed to be doing. So when I look at SPED, it's a village approach. It's not us in a vacuum.
As the head of a program, can you talk to me about your leadership style specifically? How you deal with people who work for you? And how you'll deal with the community around?
Yeah. So I would describe myself as very collaborative. I'm not an iron-fist kind of girl, never have been. I like to solicit opinions. I'm a think-first, speak-second kind of communicator. So for me, the first thing I want to do is get a read on how everything's going. So that's how, you know, I would start it. In terms of how I lead and have led, and I would encourage you to talk to, you know, my staff and my parents, here's what I can tell you. I think my staff fully believe in me. I think they know when I say I'm going to do something that it's going to happen. And they know I'm a very hard worker. I don't ask anybody to do anything I wouldn't do. In terms of leadership, I don't think that's just with staff. I think that's with our community. I sit at the table every day with parents, having very difficult conversations. There's nothing more personal to a parent than their child. I'm a parent of two. I never let anybody forget it, because I think it governs who I am, and it should govern how we do business. So when my parents are at the table, I'm proud to tell you that even when there's been disagreement, I think most, if not all, of my parents would say, hey, that was tough. You know, maybe I liked that outcome, maybe I don't. But I was treated fairly, I was treated respectfully, and I understood what was happening. So that's how I lead. I explain, I teach, and always I solicit opinion. I'm famous for saying it, you don't have to agree with me, you're never going to offend me. That's the way I am. I mean, it's fine. My feelings don't get hurt that easily, so that's a plus.
Adam.
Thank you.
To start off, I am a special education teacher myself, so I, you know, fully support everything here that you're talking about. Specifically, I had a couple of questions here, kind of combining a couple of things you've said in other ways. So my question initially was, what will you do to specifically help students, special ed students specifically in Middleborough? And I kind of like the idea where you said that SPED is not just SPED's problem or SPED's job, it's the whole community's job. Could you enhance upon that?
Well, you're touching on PD, and I can't say, professional development. I can't say too much about that, because I would never claim to know exactly how that's going to roll out before I've talked to my fellow administrators. But one of the fastest ways for me to address that is to get online with my principals and see if we can't come up with a way to have some collaborative professional development or collaborative PLCs. I've worked most recently with Mr. Branigan on this particular topic, because we were talking about it last week. And he's been talking about having PLCs cross-departments, which includes the special ed department. I'm super excited about it, and it's something I want to see replicated at every level. One of the things I've seen, again, at team meetings, is that my general ed teachers are coming, and if a mistake is made or something's not going well, nine times out of 10, it's because they didn't understand how that disability impacted their classroom. Especially when a teacher is looking at 20, 25 kids, and maybe six or seven are on IEPs. So one of the ways I would tackle that is through professional development and through specific training. I think it's very powerful when the leaders in a district agree on responsibility. And I don't think I hold this view alone. And that's one of the reasons why I'm excited particularly today to join this team like this. I don't think I'll be the only one touting this. I think all of my principals will agree, and I'm excited for that. Did I answer that, or did you have? I think there was a second part, but I can't remember it.
I got the gist of it, yeah. Thank you.
Craig.
Hi, nice to meet you.
I don't have a lot of experience in special education, so I'm going to ask a more general question. You've been here two years as a?
Four years.
Four years, I'm sorry, four years. What's a particularly difficult situation you faced? And how did you come through it? And what did you take from it?
Well, I'll draw on something most recently, okay? Because I was at a team meeting at the high school, and this particular student has an emotional disability. And she really wanted to drop out. She wanted to drop out all year. And in my opinion, when a child who is not yet receiving, is either receiving a diploma or a certificate of completion at 22, that's the biggest failure I can have. So we spent this team meeting, I kind of threw process out the window a bit, because I said, this is just too serious. We really need to discuss this. And we talked about several different options, you know, that we could offer to her, either through community night school or even coming up with a, you know, hybrid day. And the high school administration's been so gracious about that. They give me so much leeway, and our family so much leeway. It really is such a win for us as a community. But I urged her to go home and sleep on it, because compulsory attendance ends at age 16. She's older than 16. She can drop out at any time. And she withdrew on the second-to-last day of school. And she's a junior, and for me, that's a failure. So how I would address that in the future is attack that even earlier. In this particular case, she has a guardian. The guardian was involved. The guardian agreed with us. She had a wraparound team from outside agencies. They agreed with us. It wasn't contentious. It wasn't that anybody was saying anything different. It's that we lost this girl. And I don't want to lose anymore. So for me, that's about engaging every student. And the way you do that is to have a cohesive building. I think we do at the high school. I don't mean it like we don't. But in this particular case, I would have liked to try to engage her even earlier. Sure.
I mentioned earlier some of the strengths in the SPED department in the district. My question is, as an employee in the district for four years, and obviously an observer in special education, what weaknesses do you see that you would like to work on right away? What weaknesses are out there that we, school committee, should know so that we can help this position grow?
Well, I can tell you that my first goal is bringing leadership to this position in a district-wide manner. I am really frontline. I've done the frontline. I don't intend to step off the frontline just because I'm in this office. It's very important to me that I'm fostering growth in not just the administrators underneath me, but the entire special ed department. The really cool thing about Middleborough is that people come and people stay. And that happens for a specific reason. One of the ways you ensure that is to make sure they grow as professionals. So a personal goal of mine is to address that, provide quality mentoring, and really foster the talent that we have here. One of the issues I do see is alignment. And that's not, every district faces this problem. But, you know, you see it in terms of, if I'm just looking at my social-emotional programming, for example. The programs look fairly different when you're looking at the elementary level and then the middle school level and then the high school level. So I'm really hoping to bring those people together to share information. I don't necessarily think anyone's doing it wrong. I just think we're doing it differently. And when you're doing it differently, it can be jarring to the student, to the family. And it can, you can waste time on learning trying to recoup that, particularly in transition years. So vertical alignment's really important to me. And then in terms of other areas of weakness, I mean, for me, I want to retain our talent. I want to make sure we're keeping our employees. I want to make sure they're happy here, that they feel heard, that they feel appreciated. Especially in special ed, it really is a tough vocation, you know? And it's not easy work. So I think it's important that they are led by somebody who gets that and never loses sight of it.
Aside from special education, district-wide, one of the items is attendance and keeping attendance up. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. I can tell you, because I know a little bit about attendance, that our attendance rates are quite good. So I'm pleased to tell you that I don't think we face some of the same situations that we do in other communities. However, I really think that when you're looking at attendance, what you're really talking about is what happens when the student isn't there. Now, one of the ways we tackle that, or at least we have at the secondary level, and I'm sure they're doing it at the elementary level as well, is through our child study teams, CST, or sometimes they call it BBST. But in any event, it's professionals sitting around a table and identifying this as issue, as an issue. I want to be involved in all levels of CST, because again, I want uniformity in how we handle non-attendance. Like I said, I'm hands-on. I think it's great. I've heard administrators will call, they'll drive to the house, they'll do just about anything. You know, there are an array of ways to handle that, which even can include court involvement, and there are times when that's appropriate. But I'd rather see us not rely on that overly so. I think there are other ways we can try to engage our students. You know, sometimes kids don't come because they don't think anyone's going to notice. So one of the ways to extinguish that is to notice. I can tell you, I think we keep very good tabs on our attendance. So I don't see this as, you know, like a critical issue that I have to address, like, right away. But it'll be part of a very large job and many, many items on an agenda.
You mentioned uniformity in terms of everybody speaking the same language, doing the same things. As a special educator, I've encountered issues where an IEP is written one way in a middle school, and then another way in a high school, and then another way in an elementary school. You know, I've gotten them, as a ninth-grade teacher, and it makes no sense at all. What does the student need? What could, what do you, what would you like to do to improve that unification?
So I can tell you, I've already started on that. Because I have overseen for the last four years specifically the transition from grades eight to nine. But there's been a large chunk of this time where I've also handled five to six. And you're exactly right. That's exactly what happens. You get this IEP, and you're thinking, who wrote this? And what am I going to do with this? And how does that work? That happens at team meetings. And the fastest way to address that is through the people who are sitting at team meetings, which would be my team facilitators. I have a fantastic relationship with my team facilitators, because I am a team facilitator. So I'm pretty confident in how we're going to handle that. I'm going to treat that internally, because I think the way that, you know, the way that happens is because, you know, you'll write an IEP in one grade, and it's not as simple as you would think to change all of the wording in the next annual team meeting. But as with anything, how it's presented is critical. I think sometimes you're sitting at a team meeting, and there's a desire to have everything in there so that nothing gets lost. And I understand that. But I think when you change the focus of that conversation to, we really need to focus on putting in this document what is critical and what we want to ensure happens every single year, you know, you're changing the dialogue a little. So that, for me, that's about team meetings, how team meetings are run. I explain this to parents, and I've had really good success with it. When you're looking at, you know, I'm looking at IEPs from grades eight to nine, even in the last three years, what I'm seeing is documents that come up that really do reflect the student. And part of that is making sure parents have trust in the process. We've done a lot of work with our transition years and how that happens, our transition meetings, how our educators are prepared to receive new students. And I think our parents have comfort in knowing that it's a measured step. It's not kind of helter-skelter, up come all these students, and nobody knows anything about them. It's quite the opposite. It's a very methodic process. So when you explain that in team meetings, again, I mean, it's, the end of the day, a team meeting's all about trust. And team, you know, at a team meeting, your trust is either broken or earned, and it has to be earned all the time. This is one of the ways you do that, so that when you're saying, now, let's look at that PLEPA, that present levels of educational performance. Let's look at that list of accommodations, and let's see if we can really get a handle on what's being used and what's not. And that's the way I've been able to do it over the last four years. I see no reason why that wouldn't continue.
Thank you. Can you talk to us a little about, if you take over, you'll essentially have about a month before school begins. So can you tell us about your focus for that month before and that focus for when school begins?
Okay, so before school begins, the first thing I want to do is get a handle on professional development. And the best way I can do that is to meet with all of my administrators individually, particularly the building-level principals. Every building has its own plan. I think it's important that I not trample on it, and I have no intention to. So the first thing I need to do is get really a mini-needs assessment. What's working? What's not working? What are we going to address? And then I'm going to create a punch list for every single building. And this punch list is going to be for one year, because I think if I, if I'm not doing this every year, it's a mistake. And one year, we'll keep that list at a place that's attainable, you know? So the first thing I'd want to focus on is that professional development. I'm also sensitive to the fact that stepping into this role is leaving the high school in a similar position. So I am going to be sensitive to that, and I still think that the high school needs to be set up properly. So I see myself still doing some of that work in the next month while we're figuring that out. Once school begins, I really want to spend some time assessing the staff, because a large part of this job is evaluating staff. And the only way you can do that is if you sit down with them during their goal drafting and then get into the classroom and actually see. I want to be in every building. I don't want to sit in the office really at all, if I can avoid it. The best way to do that is to move your body and go and spend the day. So I plan to be doing that a lot in the very first part of the year, to get an idea of where we are. I'm an information collector, so I can't know where I'm going until I know where I've been. And I have a good handle on that at the secondary level. But, you know, truly, I mean, I, there's still work to be done there as well. So I'm going to be doing that at all my levels.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. I do want to offer this. It's kind of unusual, but in most situations that I can think of that we would normally do interviews for, we would have a group of people do interviewing of candidates, and then we would essentially be whittled down. So I'll open it up to the floor. I'll ask anyone if they have a question or a topic that we haven't discussed. I would prefer if people would address it to me, because obviously there's some questions I can't answer, ask in a formal interview. But if people do have questions or topics that we haven't touched upon, I think it's reasonable now to ask if anyone wants to ask those questions. Anybody? Can I ask you to come down? Have a seat, Ms. Morris.
Hello. I'm Alyssa Odie Morrison, which she knows me. A mom of-
A mom of a daughter who's been in sped. She's now going to be in third grade. I'm also president of IMPACT, which, yeah, we like working with our facilitators. One of my questions is, I guess it's a question, how vested you are in Middleborough? Because I've been in here now for nine years that I've taught here, had kids eight, and I've gone through, you'll be our fourth head of special ed. Who've promised us as parents, they're going to work for our kids. They're going to do the best and we have them just leaving and leaving, and it's a bad feeling, a hard sell for us. We work with our kids so hard. You know, we want someone who's going to work with us and provide individual education for a lot of them. I know that there's a lot of cost, but these kids deserve it. So that's my, that's my question.
I'm glad you asked this. And I'm glad you asked this because, you know, no director should ever sit here and say, I'm going to be here forever because you can't know forever. Here's what I can tell you. I've looked on the other side. This year, in fact, I was a finalist in an area closer to where I live. I don't live that far away. But it was an affluent area. I got all the way to the end and it didn't fit. And if an area that close to me with that kind of budget doesn't appeal to me, then nothing but Middleborough ever will. As I started, when I came here from the practice, I came here for Middleborough. And no other director can tell you that. I came here out of the practice of law for this community. So it's going to be pretty hard to get rid of me because I feel very committed to what's here. And, you know, I've heard Mr. Branigan say this, that he feels like this community is like a sleeping giant. And I couldn't agree more. I think once we have the right permeation, I think the whole state's going to take notice. And I think we're getting there. I really do. So in terms of how I can assure you, I would, call me. Call me, talk to me anytime you want. But I can tell you that I've actually looked on the other side of that looking glass and I can tell you that what's on the other side of that looking glass is not for me. I've been here four years. I don't have any plan to go anywhere. And I'm really hoping to make this a more permanent position for me. Just on a personal note, I hate change. You know, so this is the way I would do change, which is internally here in the district. That's probably the, the most amount of change that I have a comfort level with. But I think it's a valid question and as a parent, I totally get it.
Can I ask you another question? This concerns special ed busing. We've had an issue and it's taken me a long haul to try and get this through. It's very important when it comes to fire drills with our kids. And it's been very hard for me to push through. But it's even more important for our kids. Some do not speak. Some have problems with too many people, too many sounds, a lot of things, have lots of sensory things going on. So it took till the end of the year for them to get a fire drill with them. And I'm wondering how you feel because I feel that their fire drill should be set up with the typicals. There should be at least two a year. Parents should be involved. Parents should know what's going to happen so we can speak the same language as that they're speaking so that we can say, you know, prepare them. This is going to happen. So I wanted to know how you felt in that because I felt really resistance to this. And, you know, we had a fire in a bus and it burned down. So it's not like it couldn't happen, you know? So it's two minutes, the lady had just dropped off somebody and the whole broth went. You can't get out those wheelchairs and stuff themselves. So I worry about that and monitors on the bus and things. So I wondered how you, what you thought about that.
I'm definitely pro-fire drills for everybody. So I can tell you at the secondary level, everybody's doing the fire drill. And this isn't just about fire drills. I've worked with the DIRTT committee and Mr. Deisel specifically. We've identified this as an issue that if we're in a lockdown or if we're doing some type of training, that we have to take special considerations for certain programs. What's the expectation of the teacher and the ESPs in that room if we're in a lockdown? So that is something I plan to look at. I don't fully know how the fire drill process works at the elementary level. I can tell you I will find out. I would invite as much conversation as this needs to until you have a comfort level. And, you know, we all have an understanding of how it's going to work, why it's going to work that way and why it's important. I can tell you the fire department's usually involved in that process as well. In fact, they're always involved in that process as well. So I don't know if that is a factor in this, but we'll pull the pieces together and, I mean...
Yeah, probably we're involved too, just because I want the same language. Like typical kids can go off the back of the bus, they get it. Our kids don't. We were told we couldn't know when this was occurring or anything of that sort and that was a little disconcerting to me.
Well, and I've heard that, I've heard that a lot about advanced notice, particularly in lockdown drills. We get that a lot, particularly in our social emotional programs where parents want advanced notice of it. And one of the push, one of the reasons that pushback exists is because it isn't authentic if people are aware. Having said that, you can't be good at anything unless you practice it. So, yeah, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Carol, I know, I do want to make a comment, Carol, because I think it's incumbent upon all school systems, not just Middleborough. But I think we do a horrible job of explaining special ed. I think if you look at kids, you know, we talk about bringing kids back. We can't bring kids back in residential settings and we can't bring kids back in hospital settings. But yet, those are the two settings in which cost us the most. And so I think we need to explain what those settings are like, what those settings are about and what, why those settings cost so much. And those pieces and why when we send kids to outside placements, there's reasoning behind that. And in a lot of cases, we want to send kids to those outside placements because they make sense. Because we can't, we can't do here what another outside placement can do. So I do want to raise that and I know it's, it's constantly a, a comment about this. There seems to be this rift between special ed and regular ed at times and it doesn't make sense to me because they're still the same kids. We're trying to educate kids the best we can. And so I think everyone does, I think everyone does a horrible job explaining what happens in special ed, not just Middleborough personally.
I would agree.
I would agree. I would say rare are the opportunities that schools take advantage to say, this is a learning moment. Let's sit, let's talk about it, let's digest it, and then let's devise a plan so that it doesn't happen again. I mean, for me, that's, that's how I do my everyday. Unfortunately for my family, that's how my house is run too. But it has to be, you know? I mean, when you're looking at these very, very expensive residential placements, what you're looking at in a residential placement is round-the-clock care. A public school that has six hours a day is never going to, is never going to match up to a 24-hour care facility. But there's plenty of ground to be made in day placements, particularly social emotional programs. That's the area that I think is the fastest growing and I don't think it's unique to Middleborough. But social emotional programming is, it can be hard to plan for. And on top of it, the students can go from okay to not okay and in unsafe situations very, very quickly. So one of the ways you look at that is how are we meeting the needs of kids with social and emotional needs? We do have programming, district-wide, for emotional disabilities, but I think there's room to grow there. And I think that's one of the areas where we can try to, you know, hang on to money that we need. So in terms of explaining it, I think once students go out, it's a lot harder to get them back in because families get used to what out-of-district placements look like and what they have to offer. It also marks a break in their connection to the community. So I think keeping our families connected to our community is, in a lot of ways, the most important thing we do. Every child has a right to be educated in the least restrictive environment, but also in the community in which they live. That's all fine and well, but that child has to be connected to that community for that to resonate. So that's one of the other ways I would explain that. Too often, we have cases where, you know, the child doesn't feel connected. And that starts in, within the walls of every single school here. Those are the things we can control, not the child that needs 24-hour care because we're a public school. I mean, we face that, every community in Massachusetts faces that and really well beyond Massachusetts as well. Sure.
Does that, what else, have any other questions?
Carol, I thank you for, oh, please, sir.
And he has recently become blind. And the school system has worked very hard with us to help him with that. He's also autistic.
Ms. Morris, excuse me. Could we ask you to speak a little closer to my...
Oh, sorry. Sure. I'm a soft voice. So my son has a lot of emotional because he's nervous. He's not seeing further than right here. So there's a lot of nerves. And the staff has been great with him and really accommodating, so I appreciate that. I think, I love what you said about having all the staff understand how the IEP needs to be followed and that we need to catch the signs of being upset and help them through it prior to it becoming a full-blown attack. So I think sensory integration would be a great thing to look at. But I do like the idea of all of the teachers' understanding because when he goes into certain classrooms, people don't understand. So the aide is there to help him. And it's overwhelming for the teacher, I think, sometimes to understand how to help him with his emotional issues. So I think it's great that you have that, that plan. So I do appreciate that. Do you have any questions for a parent as to what we're looking for or any questions in particular?
Absolutely. I have plenty of questions. I think the, I think my biggest question that I would ask any parent in this district is what area do you think is the greatest area of need right now, from your perspective? So...
Yeah, I definitely feel teachers need to be more involved in the understanding of what is going on with the children. Sensory, using the sensory rooms more, getting more educated on how to use sensory. Because if you use the sensory, there will not be an outburst later in the day. Or you'll see the kids getting agitated and you can help them with that. Also, just having more conversations with the teachers to help them keep the IEPs, you know, being utilized and actually following them more closely. And just, that's the biggest thing for me.
Thank you. I can tell you that sensory integration is very important. Our occupational therapy department is extremely talented here in Middleborough. I would argue probably the most talented occupational therapy department I've seen in Massachusetts, based on what I've seen. Their understanding is extremely vast and they are really adept at explaining. So when I'm talking about PD and I'm talking about how I see us as resource-rich, this is a really good example because our occupational therapy department has the opportunity to convey all of that information if they're given time and an audience to do it. So for me, that's when I'm looking, that doesn't cost this district a dollar. You're putting people who are already experts at what they do and sharing that information out. So that's one way I would address that. Absolutely. You know, when a student is having an emotional reaction to something, they can be exhibiting that physically and they can also be doing absolutely nothing. I think that all teachers need refreshers on how disabilities impact a student in their classroom because not only is it different person-to-person, but it's different disability-to-disability. So warning signs aren't always there. You can't catch every single one. But if it's in your mind, if it's in the forefront in your mind because you had some training on it, you're more inclined to catch it. So I share that concern and I thank you very much.
Ms. Montress?
Hi, my name is Heather Montress. I'm a special education parent. I've been a sped parent for 10 years in the district. I cannot believe that. I actually have a question for you about, you mentioned something called a certificate of completion. I just wanted to know if you could please explain what the difference is between a certificate of completion and a diploma? And who might receive one or the other? And if you happen to know the percentage of Middleborough special education students, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but that would receive a certificate of attendance rather than a diploma, and what are the criteria?
Sure. So, well, you know what a diploma is. And I think the standards are pretty clear and they're set forth in the program of studies and the handbook at the high school. Any student who is eligible for special education who cannot or does not achieve the local ed requirements for graduation and a diploma would be entitled to a certificate of completion. So those are students who are usually in age 18 to 22. It's called a certificate of attendance because part of the process to obtain that is regularly attending their program at the high school. Mrs. Redlon, a team facilitator here in the district, and Mr. Branigan and I have actually already begun fleshing out, what does that certificate of completion look like? What does a student have to do to do it? It involves functional academics. It involves life skills. It involves vocational training. All the skills that students are going to need to make a transition into adulthood successful. So when you're looking at, you know, as students get older at the high school level, the goal for every student may not be a high school diploma. The reason that would be the case is if a student is unable to either achieve local ed requirements, which is set by the high school. So there's a certain number of maths, sciences, English, arts, PE, whatever the credits. But in all the domains. So either if the student can't achieve that or if the student cannot obtain a needs improvement or higher on all three MCAS exams. Science, which is biology, English, and math. So anytime that happens, a diploma cannot be conferred. Now, for students on IEPs, that does not have to make or break a student in terms of their success into adulthood. Very often at the high school level, we find ourselves talking about a student who is pulling away from their studies maybe because the content of what they're, what they're working on is simply too difficult, too overwhelming. I've had the very sad experience of seeing firsthand a very happy student go to being an unhappy student. So this happened recently and Mrs. Redlon came to my meeting and we talked about moving this child into the life skills program. And I'm happy to tell you that there's been a major transformation in that student to a much happier student. A student who's now going to finish their high school studies with a full resume, with a full understanding of what it's going to take to be a professional. They'll have life skills and self-care skills and also functional academics. So in terms of the percentage of how many students are in this category, I don't have a percentage. I don't know that I could actually even do that math without a calculator, or at least looking at the numbers. It is a small percentage. And I can tell you that the high school feels very committed to this, that regardless of whether or not a student receives a diploma or a certificate of completion, they are part of their graduating class. They are part of senior activities. They are part of Middleborough. So I'm very proud to tell you that, you know, the high school underwent a transformation in our life skills suite just last year and really transformed that space. And I'm incredibly proud of it and the work that's going on in that program because it's teaching kids skills that they are going to need as independent adults. And that's a personal call as to which kids end up there. It's, you know, very often a team decision. Sometimes it's a parental decision. But it's usually dictated by the student's severity of disability and in which domains it impacts that student. Does that answer that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Carol, thank you for coming before us tonight. We appreciate it especially since, you know, these are unusual interviews. Most people get interviewed behind closed doors. You get interviewed on television in front of a bunch of people, so we really appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
I'll ask the superintendent for his recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and members of the audience, I would start by saying that this is a very important position in the school district, as you know. It's, I would venture to say it basically is a vital position. It's a vital position in this district. This is 16 days or 17 days past the resignation of the previous PPS director. And if I didn't think we had the right person for this job before us this evening, I would not recommend her to you for employment. This position is important to children. It's important to parents and guardians. It's important to teachers. It's important to ESPs. It's important to principals. It's important to the business manager, quite frankly, also. And it's also important to the superintendent of schools, vitally important to the superintendent of schools. I think we're fortunate that we have somebody within our school system who can complete this role. Somebody with the background, the intelligence, the knowledge and the vision to complete this job successfully and to work this job successfully. We could do a full search and we certainly would include a number of individuals, as you said, Mr. Chairman. you said, Mr. Chairman, and traditionally we might. We do have a short period of time here before the beginning of school. That's not the reason Carolyn Lyons is before you. The reason Carolyn Lyons is before you is that she's the best person for this position. I've seen, I've worked with a lot of special ed directors in my, this is my 34th year in education, and I would say in my two extended interviews with Carolyn Lyons, I've heard more positive things about the visioning before the Middleborough Public Schools than I've heard in a lot of other school systems. So it is with great confidence that I recommend to you that you appoint Carolyn J. Lyons, JD, the new pupil personnel services director for the Middleborough Public Schools this evening.
So we should move the superintendent's recommendation?
Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we appoint Carolyn J. Lyons, JD, the director of pupil personnel services for the Middleborough Public School System, subject to successful negotiation by the superintendent.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. I would like to thank the superintendent. I know the superintendent has worked very hard, and the purpose of, again, as you said, the purpose of appointing Carolyn is not because we need somebody right away, it's because you found somebody. You have consistently looked within the system to find people to do various tasks that you believe can move up, and I point to the new principal of the MECC, and I also point to our, our current facilities director. So I really appreciate that about you, that you constantly are looking from within the system to find people that can do these jobs and prove themselves over and over again. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of my biggest concerns with this position, with Carolyn moving up into this position, was what was going to happen at the high school. I'm concerned about it. Our, the children that I worry most about, I don't want to be left behind. And during this discussion tonight, Carolyn touched upon the fact that she already knows, she feels the same way, and she's going to find herself there and making sure that this doesn't happen. And that really, it makes me feel more confident in this move. That's why I think that it's such a great ability for us to move from within without a detrimental effect in other places. So I'm thankful that she, she touched upon that this evening, because that was going to be one of my big questions, is how we're going to handle the high school specifically, because that's where the void would be. And I thank her for coming out tonight.
Other discussion? Mr. Lam?
I was very impressed with how knowledgeable you are in special ed. Past all of the knowledge of special ed and past all the money and everything else like that, I think it's very telling for two things. How you talk with parents impressed me a lot. I think it's also very showing that we have probably one of our largest turnouts in this audience tonight in a very long time. Thank you for coming.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gill.
I just think we, as a district, and I'm going to say what has already been mentioned, are very fortunate to have, in this particular case, somebody inside who can and is willing and is energetic about doing this job. So I would like to thank you for applying. I also like to thank you for being here the past four years. And I personally hope that you're here for a whole lot more than four more years, and I'm sure that you will be. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Carolyn. Chairman, it's a motion to allow the chair to sign Carolyn's contract when it is finished.
So moved?
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Other than, again, this is one of those contracts that I have to sign, and it's important that my signature is on it, so I want to make sure the committee is okay with it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. The only thing I have left on my agenda tonight is correspondence. Does anybody have anything from correspondence?
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I don't have something, I don't have something directly in correspondence, but in the table of contents portion, I just wanted to make note of the fact that there were requests for school choice coming, four new, four new requests for school choice, which is interesting. Nice to see people wanting to come to our district.
Any further discussion in the correspondence? Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Do I hear a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.